Please rise for the presentation of the colors by the Dover High School Air Force Junior Reserve Officers Training. Please remain standing for the invocation by the Reverend Elmer N. Davis, Pastor of Watco United Methodist Church and Chaplain of the Dover Police Department. And please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance led by the Dover High School Junior AFROTC. And then the National Anthem by Alyssa Perez. Reverend Davis, if you'd come to the podium, please.
Let us pray. Eternal and all wise God, the giver of our good gifts, God, we thank you for tonight. And God, we ask that you look over the windows of heaven, shower down some blessings on our city council, our mayor, and all the leaders in our community that we can work together in partnership with respect, have an integrity, dedication, and we would be empowered to be the city that you called us to be. Lord, we ask that you just be in this place. We invite your presence. We thank you for what you've already done and what you can do and what you will do. We ask these blessings in Jesus's name we pray, and let the Redeemer of the Lord say amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alyssa?
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we held at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there? Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Forward, arms. Ready, set.
We can take our seats. I'd like to thank Reverend Davis, the Dover High School Junior ROTC, and Alyssa Perez for their participation in this evening's festivities. Thank you very much. Gentlemen, you have before you the agenda for this evening's meeting. Are there any additions or deletions?
Mr. Mayor, if there's not, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Hutchison, seconded by Councilman Hare. Any question on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried. Thank you very much. You have before you the consent agenda. We have before us the consent agenda. Those items that are on the council agenda which are considered routine and non-controversial are marked with an asterisk and will be acted upon by a single roll call vote of the council. There will be no separate discussion of any of the items appearing on this agenda unless members of council remove a request that they be removed for discussion and considered as a separate item. Pleasure of council.
Move to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Hare, seconded by Councilman Neal. Any question on the motion? Seeing no question, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Suddler?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Hosfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchison?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously, and the consent agenda for this evening is adopted. Next order of business is the adoption of the minutes for the regular council meeting of April 25, 2016. Pleasure of council.
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion is carried. Those minutes are adopted by council. Next order of business is the reaffirmation of the mayor and council's oath of office to be administered by the Hon. William L. Witham, Resident Judge, Superior Court, State of Delaware. Judge Witham. Officers and members of council, please rise. I would ask you all, repeat after me. Just repeat your name. Aye?
Aye.
Mr. Neal?
Roy Suddler.
Do proudly swear, or affirm?
Do proudly swear, or affirm.
To carry out the responsibilities?
To carry out the responsibilities.
Of the office of councilman?
The office of councilman.
Mayor?
Mayor.
Of the city of Dover?
Of the city of Dover.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
Freely acknowledging that the powers?
Freely acknowledging that the powers.
Of this office?
Of this office.
Flow from the people?
Flow from the people.
I am privileged to represent?
That I am privileged to represent.
I further swear?
I further swear.
Or affirm?
Or affirm.
Always to place the public interests?
Always to place the public.
Above any special?
Above any special.
Or personal interests?
Or personal interests.
And to respect the right of future generations?
And to respect the right of future generations.
To share the rich?
To share the rich.
Historic and natural heritage?
Historic and natural heritage.
Of Dover?
Of Dover.
Delaware?
Delaware.
In doing so?
In doing so.
I will always uphold?
I will always uphold.
And defend the constitutions?
And defend the constitutions.
Of my country?
Of my country.
State?
State.
And city?
And city.
So help me God?
So help me God.
Congratulations. You are reaffirmed as council members and members of the city of Dover and in your respective offices. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen. Next, we have a certificate of congratulations for the Caesar Rodney School District 100th Anniversary. I'd like to invite Susan Frampton, Principal of the W. Riley Brown School, to join me at the podium for that presentation. Madam Clerk, would you read into the record, please?
The first consolidated school district in Delaware came into existence on July 1, 1915. Shortly thereafter, residents of the towns of Camden and Wyoming jointly passed a referendum to build a new school to serve the children of their communities. In naming the institution, community leaders chose to honor one of Delaware's greatest statesmen, Revolutionary War hero, patriot, and signer of the Declaration of Independence, Caesar Rodney. The school opened its doors in 1916, serving a total of 99 students in grades 1 through 12. 100 years later, Caesar Rodney School District has grown to become one of Delaware's exemplary public school districts, serving nearly 8,000 students in 12 schools. Today, students have the opportunity to attend school in state-of-the-art facilities and take advantage of a wide array of educational offerings, including world language immersion for kindergarteners, and advanced placement dual enrollment, and career pathway offerings for senior high students. Caesar Rodney School District continues to fulfill the challenge set forth by its forefathers of being an educational leader, not only in Delaware but throughout the country. The city of Dover extends its sincere congratulations to Caesar Rodney School District on its 100th anniversary in recognition of its proud tradition of preparing students for successful, productive, and purposeful lives in a diverse global community.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. On behalf of the mayor and council and the citizens of the city of Dover, it is a pleasure to present this certificate of congratulations to the Caesar Rodney School District. And if you'd like to say a few words?
Thank you so much. On behalf of our Board of Education, our Superintendent Dr. Kevin Fitzgerald, our community, our students and staff, we thank you so much for this recognition. And if you want to go to the gala this Saturday, it will be at the Dover Downs during race weekend. Also, we do represent Dover. Our school, W. Riley Brown, is the only school in the Caesar Rodney School District that has a Dover address, and we are so pleased to avail ourselves of not only your police force, your fire station, and the wonderful electricity that never goes out. Thank you so much for this recognition. We appreciate it greatly.
Thank you. Next, we have a certificate of congratulations for the Dover High School Music Department, and I would ask the representatives to step forward for the presentation. And Madam Clerk, would you read this into the record, please?
Certificate of congratulations presented to Dover High School Music Department, which recently competed in the Festivals of Music in Myrtle Beach, South Carolina, and received awards in the following categories. Chamber Choir, Superior Second Place Mixed Choir Category. Concert Choir, Superior Third Place Mixed Choir Category. Drum Line, Superior First Place Drum Line Division. Jazz Band, Excellent First Place Double-A Jazz Band Category. Marching Band, Superior First Place Pre-Parade Division and Best Overall Parade Band. Poms, Superior First Place Parade Auxiliary Division. Select Ensemble, Superior First Place Mixed Choir Category and Best Overall Mixed Choir. String Orchestra, Excellent First Place A String Orchestra Category. Symphonic Band, Excellent First Place A Concert Band Category. Tyree Dennis, Most Outstanding Jazz Soloist. Wind Ensemble, Excellent First Place Double-A Concert Band Category and Best Overall Concert Band. Mr. Garrett George, Band Director, Mr. Bradley White Knight, Director of Choral Activities, and all of the members of Band, Chorus, and Strings demonstrated exemplary performances on behalf of the Capital School District and Dover High School. The city of Dover extends its sincere congratulations.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. It's an honor and a pleasure on behalf of the mayor and council to present you with this certificate of congratulations. Alyssa, if you want to step up here and hold this. Thank you very much. Thank you. Of course, you know, we had to give equal time to Dover High. Would any of you care to step forward and say a few words?
On behalf of the entire Capital School District Board of Education, Dr. Sheldon Superintendent, and everyone associated with the music department and the high school, we'd like to thank the city of Dover for this recognition. It is a great honor and a privilege to be able to serve in the greatest high school in the state of Delaware. Thank you.
Sorry, I was a little off-script. I'm a little rusty at doing this. Next order of business on the council agenda is the election of the council president and vice mayor for the upcoming year. Are there any nominations from the floor? Councilman Hutchison?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to nominate Tim Slaven as council president.
There's a second, seconded by Councilman Hare. Are there any other nominations from the floor? I'll ask again if there are any other nominations from the floor for the election of the council president and vice mayor. If not, I'll entertain a motion at this time to close the nomination.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Suddler, seconded by Councilman Anderson. All in favor of the motion to close the nomination, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Since there are no further motions, all in favor of the nominee that we have nominated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is carried. Congratulations, Mr. President. If it pleases the council, since one of our council members is absent at this time, I'd like to beg your indulgence, and we postpone item number five till the entire council's here for the recess for the photo of 2016, 2017 council session. Is it? Can I have a motion to do so?
So moved.
Second.
Question on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is opposed, the motion is carried. Next order of business, Councilman Suddler?
One no.
One no. One voting no. Sorry, I didn't see. You have to sound off because I can't hear out of this ear.
It's okay.
Next, we have a proclamation for Community Action Month, and I would ask Kanisha Trot, First State Community Action, to the podium to accept the proclamation. Madam Clerk, would you please read it into the roll?
Whereas mental health is essential to the well-being of every individual, yet many people experience mental health-
Point of order? It should be the Community Actions.
Whereas Community Action Agencies were created when the Economic Opportunity Act of 1964 was signed into law, and currently there are approximately 1,000 such agencies serving the underprivileged in the United States. And whereas First State Community Action Agency has been committed to working with individuals and communities to overcome the challenges of unemployment, homelessness, substandard living conditions, and hunger in Delaware since 1965. And whereas First State Community Action Agency has made an essential contribution to individuals and families in Delaware by providing innovative and cost-effective programs that enable them to improve their lives and living conditions. And whereas Delaware and the entire country must continue to promote economic security and ensure that all citizens are able to live with dignity by providing support and opportunities for those in need of assistance. Now therefore, I, Robin R. Christiansen, Mayor of the city of Dover, Delaware, hereby proclaim May 2016 as Community Action Month in the city of Dover in recognition of the hard work and dedication of First State Community Action Agencies.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Kanisha, on behalf of the mayor and council, we are very pleased to present you with this proclamation. If you'd like to say a few words?
Certainly. First, I just want to say thank you on behalf of the Board of Directors, Bernice Edwards, our executive director, and the staff of First State Community Action Agency. Thank you, Mayor, councilmen and women, and the city of Dover for your support of our agency. It's a pleasure and honor to serve and make an impact on the communities here in Dover and statewide. And I did want to leave you with some fresh baked cookies made by our culinary arts department, our students there. So we hope you enjoy. They are not diet, but enjoy them. And again, thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for the cookies.
Favor of speech, Mayor.
Chief Guard, these cookies. Next, we have a proclamation for Mental Health Awareness Month. Madam Clerk, would you read that into the minutes, please? Is there anybody present to accept this this evening?
Whereas mental health is essential to the well-being of every individual, yet many people experience mental health conditions for periods of emotional and psychological distress, especially during times of difficulty. And with effective treatment, individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives. And whereas, we as a community must learn to recognize the signs of mental distress and ensure that those who are struggling are encouraged to seek the help they need. And each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen has a responsibility to support prevention programs and promote mental wellness. Now therefore, I, Robin R. Christiansen, Mayor of the city of Dover, Delaware, hereby proclaim May 2016 as Mental Health Awareness Month in the city of Dover and encourage all citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the different steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next, we have a proclamation in regard to Public Works Week, and I would ask the city of Dover's Public Works Director Sharon Dukka to please step forward. Scott, would you also like to step forward? Madam Clerk, would you read that into the minutes, please?
Whereas, public works services are an integral part of the daily lives of those in our community, and the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs, such as facilities management, fleet maintenance, grounds and parks maintenance, solid waste collection and recycling, street and stormwater management, water production and water and wastewater operations and maintenance. And whereas, the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on the quality and effectiveness of public works facilities and services, whose engineering, construction, and inspection are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of the city of Dover Public Works Department staff. And whereas, the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel of the Public Works Department is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work that the department performs. And whereas, the American Public Works Association 2016 National Public Works Week theme, "Public Works Always There," speaks to the essential nature of public work services in support of everyday quality of life. Now therefore, I, Robin R. Christiansen, Mayor of the city of Dover, Delaware, hereby proclaim May 15 through 21st, 2016, as Public Works Week in the city of Dover, and urge all citizens and organizations to learn more about the issues involved in providing public works and to recognize the contributions that dedicated Public Works Department employees take every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. On behalf of the mayor and council, it gives me great pleasure to present you with this proclamation, Sharon, to you and the hard-working people in your department, and to you, Scott, as a former Public Works Director and currently your city manager. Anything you'd like to say?
I sure do.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
And I can assure you that I won't be as verbose as my predecessor, but I do have some prepared remarks I'd like to share with you. This year's National Public Works theme, "Public Works Always There," showcases the extensiveness of public works. Public works projects and services have been part of our modernized way of life for centuries. Examples include establishment of the first municipal dump in Athens, Greece in 500 B.C., utilization of the first concrete by the Romans in 200 B.C., construction of aqueducts in Rome from 500 B.C. to 180, construction of the Taj Mahal in 1647, institution of street sweeping by Ben Franklin in Philadelphia in 1757, establishment of the New Deal and numerous public works programs by FDR in 1930, start of construction of the interstate highway system in 1954, completion of the city of Dover's initial municipal water system in 1882, and completion of construction of the city of Dover's first 1.5 million gallon water tank in 2016. These advances in public works over time, in addition to many others, have allowed us to come to enjoy the quality of life we know today. The city of Dover meets various needs of the community by providing the following through the Department of Public Works. Fleet maintenance of 236 vehicles and equipment, facilities maintenance of 61 buildings and structures, sanitation services resulting in the collection and disposal of nearly 12,000 tons of waste each year, grounds maintenance of 108 miles of city streets, sorry, streets, we didn't cross the divisions here, and 139 miles of storm sewer, grounds maintenance of 285 acres of city property, 2,265 street trees, and 44 flower beds, water system maintenance of 195 miles of water main and appurtenances, wastewater system maintenance of 185 miles of sewer main and appurtenances, as well as 44 pump stations, water treatment and production services resulting in the production of 1.6 billion gallons of water a year, and administration, inspection, and engineering support services to all operational divisions and capital programs. Every year is a challenge for staff to provide the services expected with the resources available. This affects our staff at all levels. As such, it is necessary to constantly reassess priorities and even utilize temps and contractors at times to achieve service delivery requirements and expectations. In the midst of this, however, it is apparent that our most valuable resource- In the midst of this, however, it is apparent that our most valuable resource is our current 76 dedicated staff members who come to work ready to meet the challenges of the day, and most days do have their challenges. Just as in any line of work, mistakes can be made and things may not turn out as planned, but it is only through the perseverance of our dedicated staff that the expectation for service each and every day can be realized. I would like to thank the public works staff for their continuing dedication and diligence, which have allowed us to enjoy the quality of life we realize in the City of Dover. It is only through them that these services are possible. I'd also like to thank Scott Koenig for his never-ending support, Donna Mitchell for assistance from the financial side, as well as the continued work of Council and Mayor. It is through the efforts of staff and your support that the City of Dover Department of Public Works can always be there.
Thank you, Ms. Duca. Next order of business on the agenda is the State of the City Address, and I will deliver that. Mr. Hare has told me, Councilman Hare, has told me I have five minutes to do so.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight, as we enter the second year of my term, I am honored to serve as your mayor. Together, I feel that the mayor and council of your city continue to work tirelessly to maintain the city and its services that each of you have come to expect. Have we been successful? Yes. Have we always been successful? No. But we, the mayor and council and city staff, and all of our employees, from the newest employee to the most seasoned one, strive daily for community excellence through quality services. Last year, I gave us a B+. Today, in the vein of my old English teacher of long ago, Phyllis Levitt, I give us a B-, because while I know we have worked diligently, we can always do better, and we will. Having said that, I thank the council president and the members of council and all the volunteers that serve on various boards and commissions throughout the city, for it is in the spirit of our predecessors that they serve to make Dover the place we all love to call home. The Dover Police Department, under the leadership of my chief, Paul Burnett, and his staff, and the dedication of the men and women of the department, who are not only my police department, their police department, but our police department, serving all of our citizens of Dover equally, I salute them for the job they do. I commend our department for being innovative and progressive. We have and will continue to review use of force and deadly force policies to guarantee we are in compliance with nationally recognized standards and practices. Thanks to the efforts of Chief Burnett and Senator Brian Bushweller, the City of Dover, through the confidence of Attorney General Matt Den, and the members of the Joint Finance Committee, secured $580,000 to enhance community policing, foot patrols, additional cameras to make our communities safer. Likewise, in our belief that we are a community, we have dedicated some of those funds to continue our very successful cadet program, as well as other projects such as the POW Program and community outreach programs to build trust between the department and the citizens we all serve. Who could question the value of the service and dedication of the men and women of the Dover Fire Department, Robins' Host Company Number One, founded in 1882 and continuing to provide continuing service as the only all-volunteer fire department serving a state capitol today? I personally would like to thank Chief Buck Carey, who I had the privilege of serving under as an Assistant Chief 20 years ago, for his continued service as fire chief, as well as the men and women who exemplify the motto "Service to Others." Please think of them and pray for them each time the siren sounds. Likewise, the men and women who daily make Dover the community for all of us to be proud of are the unsung heroes. From the linemen in the electric department to the street crews, the clerks, the administrative assistants, the customer service reps, and everyone else, they keep the city moving forward by providing above and beyond the call of duty. We thank you for your efforts, for you make us all shine. And if I missed anyone, do not be upset, because we appreciate everyone who is part of the Dover team. Finally, there are many issues which face a city that continues to grow. The challenges are many, but we have the talent and the team to meet the challenges today and ensure that our vision of the future is a safe, prosperous, and beautiful city where we all want to work, play, and live, a place we can all be proud to call home. We need to make strides in reducing crime overall. We need to see improvements in time and effort spent in economic development to bring more jobs to Dover with acceptable wages for people to raise their families on, and we need to continue to address our aging infrastructure. I thank the entire community for understanding that things always don't happen overnight, but with a strong council willing to make the tough calls needed, we will get to where we need to be. So join with me in this great and ongoing adventure as we move forward into our next fiscal year, where we will celebrate the 300th birthday of our great city by leaving a legacy to those who will come behind us, for them to match or exceed. Again, I thank you and appreciate your continued support from council, staff, and all of our citizens.
The next order of business is the annexation of properties located at 1411 and 1417 South Governors Avenue, owned by Heartland Delaware Incorporated. Ms. Townsend, would you give us an overview of this annexation request, please?
Thank you. This is an annexation request for two pieces of property located at 1411 and 1417 South Governors Avenue. It's a total of .6655 acres. This is the property that is between Governors Avenue and Route 13, just south of Webb's Lane, next to the Wendy's. The property where the Wendy's is located and the immediate property to the west is in the city, and the proposal is to bring the two parcels south into the city. The present zoning in Kent County is general business. The proposed zoning is C4 highway commercial. The comprehensive plan shows this area as residential medium density, but we determined with the concurrence of the Office of State Planning Coordination in review of the land development plan map that this is considered a minor variation in shifting the existing commercial location. It is also fully developed, or mostly fully developed as commercial. There are water and sewer available to the property, and it is served by City Electric. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on April 15th-- or, I'm sorry, April 18th, 2016. There were no members of the public that spoke regarding the proposed annexation, and the Planning Commission voted in favor of the annexation with the proposed C4 zoning. With five votes in favor and no votes in opposition, we had three members absent and we have one vacancy. So with that, I would take any questions you may have. I know there is a representative of the applicant here as well.
Members of council have questions for the planner before we open the public hearing? Seeing no questions, I declare the public hearing. First, we will have the public hearing related to the rezoning of the property located at 1411 and 1417 South Governors Avenue. I declare the public hearing now open. Is there anyone who would care to step forward and speak in favor of the proposed rezoning? I'll ask again if there is anyone who would care to step forward and speak in favor of the proposed rezoning. Seeing no one, is there anyone who would care to step forward and speak against the proposed rezoning? I'll ask again if there is anyone who would care to step forward and speak against the proposed rezoning. I declare the public hearing now closed. Pleasure of council.
To accept staff recommendation?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the annexation resolution and recommendation to Planning Commission. Any question on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Sutler?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Hosfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Next item is the adoption of the annexation-- the next is the final reading of the adoption of the rezoning ordinance, 2016-12. The first reading of the proposed ordinance was accomplished during the council meeting of March 14th, 2016. The ordinance is available at the entrance of the council chambers and is available on the city's website at www.cityofdover.com under Government. First, I will entertain a motion to entertain this as the final reading by title only.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of the motion to acknowledge this as the final reading by title only, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. Proposed ordinance 2016-12, amending the zoning ordinance and zoning map of the City of Dover by changing the zoning designation of the properties located at 1411 and 1417 South Governors Avenue. Pleasure of council.
I want to add information, did you say, adjacent to State Route 1, Mr. Mayor?
No, I did not, sir. This is for the property--
So we're still on the first?
Yes, sir, at 1411, 1417 South Governors. Any other questions on the motion? Pleasure of council.
Move the adoption--
It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Sutler?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Hosfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
The motion is carried. Thank you. Next order of business is the annexation of a property located adjacent to State Route 1 and surrounding the intersection of Lipsec Road and Persimmon Tree Lane, including three unaddressed lots of a single parcel, lots 8, 9, and 10A, and a property located at 1229 Persimmon Tree Lane, Lot 18, owned by Dover International Speedway Incorporated. Madam Planner, would you please brief the council?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an annexation request for a total of 258.43 acres, along with a request to rezone the property from agricultural and residential in Kent County to RC recreational and commercial in the City of Dover. This is the balance of the Dover International Speedway lands known as the Woodlands. It is the location for parking, camping, and outdoor festival space associated with the Firefly Music Festival, and also the camping associated with the NASCAR events. There is no proposed change in the use. Again, the purpose of this annexation is to facilitate the management of these large events under one municipal jurisdiction rather than split jurisdiction between the city and the county. There are utilities available. Should the property be developed one day in the future, however, the cost of extension of utilities would be borne by the developer at such time. Again, at this point in time, there are no major changes to the land that are planned. There are some platforms and stages and things that they will be working on as part of the music festival, but there is no development plan associated with the property. This did get reviewed through the state-plus review process, where all of the state agencies had the opportunity to comment. We certainly, as activities happen on that property, will take the state comments under advisement. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on April 18th, 2016. The Planning Commission voted in favor of the annexation with the proposed RC zoning with four votes in favor, no votes in opposition, one member needing to recuse himself, three members absent, and one vacancy on the commission. The information is summarized in the report. The excerpt from the minutes is included. We do have representatives from the Speedway here if there are any questions. I should add that during the public hearing, there were some comments from the public that expressed some concern about the activities on the property, but again, the festival is happening, and by putting it all in one jurisdiction, we're hoping to kind of work through some of the issues more effectively that have come up. So with that, I would take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend. Any members of council have questions? Councilman Sutler.
Yes, you discussed some of the concerns from the constituents in that area, and I understand that you're planning on trying to work through those concerns. How do you plan on working through those concerns?
Okay, so one of the concerns that we've heard over the years is the noise and the noise hours. So when we brought forward the changes to the RC zone, there are noise hours that are specified. So by everything being in the City of Dover, everything will be subject to that, rather than a portion of the property being subject to the city's regulations and a portion being subject to what Kent County will allow. So everything will be subject to the noise hours that we adopted in the ordinance. There are a number of other issues that the Department of Transportation addresses. There are regularly concerns about pedestrians on Persimmon Tree Lane, but that is something that DLDOT has been addressing, and there are meetings that happen throughout the year that include DLDOT, the Police Department, and other key players in ensuring the traffic flow and the public safety of the event.
Thank you.
Councilman Neal.
I'd like to address that in particular. Dover Downs, which in essence plays the host, along with the producer Red Frog, has been extremely accommodating working with residents of the area, of which I am one. We're very well aware of the problems along Persimmon Tree Lane, particularly with pedestrians walking that area and preventing emergency vehicles or any other vehicle getting through. Again, I presume that this year we were going to be meeting with our host, Dover Downs, Dover Motorsports, in working out additional things. They continually work with us as we try to find solutions. One of the problems are you're dealing with young people who sometimes don't respect authority as well as they should, or perhaps don't realize that lives could be involved if you have to get an ambulance through that particular area. But I have to compliment Dover Downs, Dover Motorsports, and the staff there of working with us to try to alleviate the problem and find ways out of it. We meet usually with them before the event to see what they're going to do after the event, to make suggestions as to what they can do. And of course, it is a tremendous economic piston that they provide in bringing in residents, bringing in money from out-of-state. And again, I appreciate their cooperation as we and the people of the community, of all of the area and the community, get together with them to discuss it and see if we can resolve it.
Thank you, Councilman Neal. Any other members of council have questions of the city planner before we open the public hearing on the zoning request? Seeing none, I declare the public hearing now opened on the zoning request. Is there anyone who would care to step forward and speak in favor of that request? I'll ask again if there is anyone who would care to step forward and speak in favor of the proposed zoning request? Seeing no one, is there anyone who would care to step forward and speak against the proposed zoning request? I'll ask again, is there anyone who would care to step forward and speak against the proposed zoning request? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing now closed. We need a motion at this time to adopt the annexation resolution of Councilman Sutler.
One quick question--
Yes, sir.
--before that takes place. So, back to the noise hours. So according to our City of Dover's ordinance, what time would the event or the noise be expected to cease?
It is-- I just want to make sure I get this correct. 2:00 a.m. on the weekend nights, and I believe it's midnight. Just want to verify that. Yeah, midnight during weeknights, and 2:00 a.m. on the Friday and Saturday night.
Friday and Saturday would consist of-- okay, thank you.
Councilman Neal.
In regards to the problems that have happened at the event have not really been from the concert itself, because they have a way of the sound engineers of getting the sound to the other end away from the public. The problem that has we've had, and what we hope this will resolve, are the private parties that are now enlisted in the county. And the county has not really been forthcoming in really taking action to close that down. And as a result of having two different jurisdictions, we now will have one jurisdiction who can then perhaps better handle the private noise coming from opposite across the way of Persimmon Tree Lane that are causing most of the problems and the noise after hours.
Any other members of council have any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adopt annexation resolution 201603.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Neal, seconded by Councilman Hare. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Sutler?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Hosfeld?
I'm going to abstain.
Mr. Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Motion is carried with one abstention. The resolution is adopted. Next order of business, we have a final reading and adoption of a rezoning ordinance 201613. The first reading of the proposed ordinance was accomplished during the council meeting of March 14th, 2016. The ordinance is available at the entrance of the city council chamber and on the city's website, www.cityofdover.com under government. First, I'll entertain a motion to approve this as the final reading by voice vote.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Neal.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Cole. Any questions on that motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion is carried. Next, we have the proposed ordinance 201613 amending the zoning ordinance and zoning map of the city of Dover by changing the zoning designation of three unaddressed lots of a single parcel of property located adjacent to State Route One and surrounding the intersection of Lipsick Road and Persimmon Tree Lane and a property located at 1229 Persimmon Tree Lane. What is the pleasure of council?
Move for accept.
Moved by Councilman Hare, seconded by Councilman Neal. Any questions on that motion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Sutler?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Hosfeld?
Again, because I'm employed by Dover Motorsports, I'll be abstaining from the vote.
Mr. Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Motion is carried with one abstention. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Next, we have the proposed hearing for a final reading of a proposed ordinance 201615. This is for a rezoning request for three, for properties located in three areas, A, B, and C, consisting of 14 parcels totaling 291.7 acres of land owned by Dover International Speedway Incorporated. The first reading of the proposed ordinance was accomplished during the council meeting of March 28th, 2016. The ordinance is available at the entrance of the council chambers and also on the city's website at www.cityofdover.com under government. First, I'll entertain a motion to consider the first reading by title only.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Neal, seconded by Councilman Cole. Any questions on the motion? All in favor of the motion to acknowledge the reading by title only, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion is carried. Proposed ordinance 201615 amending the zoning ordinance and zoning map of the city of Dover by changing the zoning designation of 14 parcels of property located in three areas, east of Lipsick Road, west of State Route One, Area A, east of State Route One, and south of Pitts Stop Lane, Area B, and north of Persimmon Tree Lane adjacent to the city limits, Area C. Ms. Townsend, would you please brief the council?
Thank you. Again, this is a rezoning request for properties owned by Dover International Speedway, 14 parcels totaling just over 291 acres. This is the balance of the Dover International Speedway property that is within the city and not zoned RC. So it has currently a hodgepodge of zonings, CPO, R8, MHP, and A. There is a portion of one parcel that is subject to the Source Water Protection Overlay Zone, and that would continue to be subject to the Source Water Protection Overlay Zone. This is an area where we recently amended the comprehensive plan adopted in March 2016. Again, this is all part of the plan to bring the Dover International Speedway properties into the city and under one common zoning classification that zoning classification is the RC zone where we have the provisions for managing the large events such as Firefly, but also, you know, the camping for the NASCAR events comes into that as well. This again had a public hearing before the Planning Commission on April 18th. There were no members of the public that spoke with regard to the rezoning. The Planning Commission voted in favor of the proposed RC zoning with four members in favor, no votes in opposition. We had three members absent and one recusal. With that, I would answer any questions you may have.
Any members of council have questions for city staff? Seeing no questions from members of council, I declare the public hearing now open. Is there anyone who would care to step forward and speak in favor of the proposed rezoning? If you would state your name and your address for the record, please. Good evening.
My name's Greg Moore. I'm representing Dover International Speedway, and I'm from Becker Morgan, 309 South Governors Avenue, Dover, Delaware. I just want to make clear that obviously Dover Downs is in favor of this rezoning, and many of these parcels that you're seeing are actually parcels that have been in the city of Dover for quite some time and have been involved in the race, Firefly, and most all for parking and camping, and we're making no changes to what we're doing there. So we want to just point out that we have no planned development in these areas. They'll continue to be used for parking and overnighting for campers as they have for some time, and it's simply consolidating all of our properties under one zoning and more of the same of what you heard in the annexation.
Any members of council have questions for Mr. Moore? Mr. Neal? Councilman Neal.
I just want to confirm, this is the area where the state police have been doing some of their training and will like continue to be available to them?
There's actually a number of parcels here, so the answer to that is yes, but there's more because a number of these parcels are running along Route One and over towards some of the residential neighborhoods on the opposite side of Route One, and it will be business as usual for all of those activities on these properties, just as you've seen it for the last 15 or 20 years at Dover International.
Thank you, sir.
Any other members of council have questions for Mr. Moore? Thank you. Is there anyone else who would care to speak in favor of the proposed rezoning? I'll ask again, is there anyone who would care to step forward in favor of the proposed rezoning? Seeing no one, is there anyone who would care to step forward and speak against the proposed rezoning? I'll ask again, is there anyone who would care to step forward and speak against the proposed rezoning? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing now closed. Pleasure of council.
Move the adoption.
Moved by Councilman Neal, seconded by Councilman Cole. Any questions on the motion? Seeing no questions, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Sutler?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Hosfeld?
Abstaining.
Mr. Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Motion is carried with one abstention. Next order of business is a public hearing and final reading of a proposed ordinance 201614. The first reading was accomplished during the council meeting of March 28th, 2016. The ordinance is available at the entrance of the council chambers and is on the city's website at www.cityofdover.com under government. Since this is an amendment to the zoning code, a public hearing is required. First, I will entertain a motion to consider the final reading by title only. The pleasure of council.
So moved.
Second.
Question on the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion is carried. Proposed ordinance 201614 amending the Appendix B, Zoning Article 6, Off-Street Parking, Driveways, and Loading Facilities, Section 5, Supplementary Regulations for Parking and Loading Facilities, Subsection 5.3, Supplementary Parking Regulations for Multiple Dwellings Including Duplexes, Multiplexes, and Apartments. Mrs. Townsend, if you would please brief the council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a fairly simple zoning fix to the language in the zoning ordinance. The term multiple dwellings is defined in the definition section, and the way the code currently reads where it says supplementary regulations for multiple dwellings, including duplexes, multiplexes, and apartments, is inconsistent with the definition of multiple dwelling in the definition section. So this simply cleans that up and allows for somebody looking at the ordinance to use the definition for multiple dwellings so that we are not creating conflicts within our own ordinance. I will say that this was found when we were reviewing a duplex project that is in the downtown and is certainly deemed to be very beneficial in terms of downtown redevelopment, and the prohibition on parking in front of duplexes because they are somehow in this considered multifamily was creating problems with the design of the development. So this is really just a cleanup, like we like to do when we find a problem, fix it. And there was a public hearing before the Planning Commission on April 18th. There were no members of the public that spoke. We had five members of the commission voted in favor. The remainder were absent, so...
Any questions for the planner regarding to this ordinance amendment? Seeing none, thank you, Ms. Townsend. I declare the public hearing now open. Is there anyone who would care to step forward and speak in favor of this proposed ordinance? I'll ask again, is there anyone who would care to step forward and speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? Seeing no one, I will ask, is there anyone who would care to step forward and speak against the proposed ordinance? I'll ask again, is there anyone who would care to step forward and speak against the proposed ordinance? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed. Pleasure of council.
To accept the staff recommendation and changes.
Moved by Councilman Hare.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Neal. Any questions on that motion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Sutler?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Hosfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
The motion is passed. Next order of business are the 201617 appointments. I deferred 18, 19, and items 20, 21, and 22. I defer to the council.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. If it's amenable to members of council, I would move that we defer items 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, and 22 until the next regularly scheduled meeting of council.
Thank you, Mr. President. Pleasure of council to defer those items.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Hare, seconded by Councilman Neal. Any questions on that motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion is carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Next, you're welcome, Mr. President. Next order of business are announcements by the city manager. Chair recognizes city manager, Kony.
Thank you, Mayor Christensen. I would like to just take a minute to follow up on the recognition from earlier tonight of the Public Works Department and also take that one step further and recognize the efforts of staff all across the organization over this past weekend. The city of Dover had a very busy weekend that included items such as Old Dover Days, the History Heritage and Hops Festival, Wesley College graduation, Delaware State University graduation, the Polytech High School Prom, as well as the Caesar Rodney High School Prom. All were activities in and around the city of Dover, and those activities included support from the city of Dover Police Department, the Volunteer Fire Service, the Emergency Management Function, the Fire Marshal's Office, our Code and Licensing Functions, our Public Works Department, our Electric Department, our library, and almost every portion of city services. And I'd like to say thank you on behalf of the city manager's office and the efforts of staff for this past weekend. The second item, a number of members of staff met with the First State Community Action Agency last week, and it just so happened that they were being recognized tonight, but we will be following up with them on a number of programs that they offer that will help various members of our community, both homeowners and renters associated with the summer cooling program, a lead program associated with housing, heating program, and also a statewide training plan related to energy education. These are all items that I expect to come back to council or to get information out to council over the coming months, and I certainly appreciate the First State Community Action Agency reaching out to us to really describe their mission and how it could have a beneficial impact on the city of Dover. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, and I'd also like to echo my appreciation to all of city staff for their outstanding performance over the weekend. I know I'm not the city manager, but I'll slip in here on his time. Having said that, are there any council members with announcements? Councilman Sutler.
My fellow councilmen and constituents of Dover, Delaware, I, Roy Sutler Jr., former chairman of the Dover Human Relations Commission of 2013, and now fourth district councilman for the city of Dover, strongly urge you and your district constituents to get involved in the upcoming town hall meeting regarding shootings and illegal gang activity in the city of Dover. On May 18th, Wednesday, 2016, in the city hall chambers right here, I will present to the community a PowerPoint presentation on Resolution Number 2013-22 with SA Number One titled, "Seizasion of Illegal Gang Formation in the City of Dover," orchestrated by the Dover Human Relations Commission of 2013. There will be state representatives from the House and also Senate to review additional funding options to help save taxpayers dollars on the fight against criminal enterprises in the city of Dover. Also, our local and state law enforcement agencies will give their input on how to identify and report illegal gang activity in your community on May 18th, 2016, at 7:00 p.m. in the city hall chambers. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Sutler. Any other members of council? Councilman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. By the way, thank you, Councilman Sutler, for that. I look forward to it, and I hope everyone else does as well on May 18th. I would like to remind everyone that tomorrow, if you're viewing this before 8:00 p.m. on May 10th, it's school board elections, and I'd like to encourage everyone to avail themselves of their right to vote for the candidate of their choice, and that is, I think that's it. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to extend my thanks and appreciation to each member of council in electing me to serve as council president for another year. I have always had just one simple goal, and that is that we conduct our affairs with civility and statesmanship, and that in so doing, we are in the trust and confidence of the people who put us in this office. I look forward to working with each of you over the coming year and keeping those goals in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'd like to thank the council president and members of the city council for your yeoman duties that you performed over the last year, and I look forward to working with you in the coming year for the betterment of our city and our citizens. Are there any other council member announcements? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this annual meeting.
So moved.
Been moved by Councilman Sutler. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of the motion to adjourn the annual meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion is carried. Thank you very much.